General public comment. And Johnny, are you here for that?
Well, I was gonna listen to something else, but as long as I'm here, I mentioned the concern I had about my driveway.
Okay.
I repaired it. The town couldn't do anything for me at the time. But the town's responsible for the drainage. It's about 30 acres that the guy from the state came and inspected and told me what I should do. And I put in the cobbler to take care of the problem. And I was looking forward to some remonstrance from the town, take some responsibility. I spoke to Ray about it, and I spoke to the road commissioner. So it's, I just bring it up as I'm here.
When did you speak to Martin on that, Johnny?
It was last year. They came to look and said he couldn't run anything in the area of cobbler or probably driveway. Tell them to work out my project instead of coming down and doing my project.
So what are you looking for? Or what would you like from the town?
Whatever consideration for the expense I went through to take care of the situation. And anything or nothing, whatever.
All right, we'll get together with Ray and Martin and take a look at it. And if there's something there we can do for you, we will.
That's very nice.
Is that all right? Where do you think? Here, we'll go with that. Excuse me. Any other general pub comments? Stefan, you got any?
I just wanted to update you guys.
Excuse me.
Week before last, I went to ACO training for animal control officers at BLCT. And Pass has put on. It sounds like there is a route to take to get set up for writing municipal fines. I wanna ask further of Pass if to see what in our ordinance would need to change to get set up with that. I wanted your guys' approval to talk to Pass about that and figure out what steps we would need to take to make the changes necessary to start being able to write municipal fines and update the ordinance a little. It's been several years anyways.
Now, I would be in favor of that so that the fines that we have, I will teethe them. Right now, they don't. People basically, they do ignore them. But, so why don't you go ahead and look into that if everyone's agreeable on that. This isn't head shaking or nodding.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to check basically with you guys before I reached out to Pass. And then, you know, in that meeting, they were discussing, you know, fines typically in the state start at $100, then go to $2, and then $300. It's like they're going great, if you will. There would be some setting up with the state for our contact person, which they say typically is a town clerk as far as getting the ticket books and getting everything going.
Well, why don't you go ahead and look into that? And when you think you can come back, what is known, we'll put it on the agenda. So it's on the agenda item rather than just coming in so that way it's worn properly. But, very good things. Any other updates or things?
Things are going good as far as the fire department goes. We got the packs in and we've got a chance to use them some and they're...
That's too bad. No.
Well, use them in training. Use them in training. So we're familiar with them.
Good.
Hopefully, never, but...
And they're working well and everything is as promised?
As promised, absolutely. Everything's worked really well with them. And they seem like they'll last for 15 years, so.
Good.
Everything seems good with them. And as far as the road department, everything's good there. We'll be doing some work tomorrow and Wednesday on the comments. It'll be closed for...
Okay, so now, you're, so everyone knows Stefan, who is MCM, was that what you said?
Yes.
Last week, and you're able to work?
Yes, so they didn't give me restrictions. They just said, "Don't exhaust yourself." So I'm still able to do my job as a general state, and I'm just more careful doing it.
Okay. Well, be certainly be careful. And if any sign of exhaustion or you're feeling like it's hard or anything like that, take off.
Absolutely. Yeah, I'm just planning by day and, you know, taking it easy. I have an appointment to start physical therapy, but it's a few weeks out because however busy everything is. So we're just taking it easy. And, you know, if it's something that hurts me, Martin told me, just let him know. And, you know, we'll find something different or...
Yeah, your health is most important, but we appreciate you taking the work that you can.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
I just have a quick question. I haven't looked, but did you, were you able to get the sign from Dick?
I'm hoping he'll be delivering it tomorrow night and we'll be able to get it up at the fire station.
Yeah, so now we know where the fire station is.
Yes, yes. The fire station will not be lost anymore.
Right, exactly. It will be found.
All right, so let's go ahead and move on. Is Mr. Centerset here?
Present.
All right, sir, would you like to maybe move into the center or near somewhere? Roll in if you want, or however you'd like to do it. We're pretty flexible here just so we can all see and hear you. So Mr. Centerset's here. He had a question regarding the Moretown Mountain Road 100B. I did notice last week or at some point in the last couple of weeks, there was a front porch forum discussion about this, so I do share.
Thank you.
Welcome to town.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. It's Center Fit.
Center Fit?
Yeah.
Center Fit.
It's 10 letters of confusion every time, so I've gotten quite used to Sierra Echo and remember Tango Echo. We have Foxtrot Indigo Tango. Was never in the military.
We're gonna blame this on Sasha because she spelled it wrong.
I'm new to town and also new being a room like this and a slide board. And I blame my daughter for all of it. She's 11 months old and will be one year old in August. And so, in so many aspects of my life, I find myself, you know, more conscientious and responsible, careful than I have been before. And so, when I come to an intersection now, I've got a whole new perspective thinking, you know, I'm making a turn with that one in the fire. So that's what brought it up. So I just thought I'd humbly start asking about it. And I put in a call to a road, highway department in Moretown. A number I have was, it may have been somebody in the room that I spoke to.
Probably Martin, Cameron, Peter, road foreman.
Yeah, and they suggested that the stature of the road was one that would have to go through the select board. And I thought, so I called and got an appointment here for the agenda. And I thought it would also be a good idea to use the front porch forum. So I shot, I got 12 or 15 replies to that. Most, all of them saying that they thought it would be a very good idea. One of them was said that they would prefer it for more time to stay the way it is. But on the whole, the vast majority of citizens' responses agreed that they liked the idea a lot for whatever that was, you know, it's pretty unofficial.
I didn't read front porch forum, so...
Oh, sorry.
I didn't read it last week, so please update me what was posted in the...
Absolutely. Well, the whole purpose for my visit, the suggestion for inquiry was about putting a mirror at the intersection where Moretown Road comes down just past the gas station. It's a pretty perilous stop sign to begin with, but the trouble I felt with it is that I can't see very far at all to the left. I can, even though the road's actually angled a little bit towards the south, the nature of that hill and the way the road curves, I think that I can see, you know, between 50 and 100 feet over there. And I think that if anybody were coming through town at better than the stop, better than the speed limit, that they might not have time to react in a safer way to somebody that was making a careful turn. And whether you're making a left or a right there, you gotta spend a little bit of careful time maneuvering your vehicle since you are coming down from a hill. So the suggestion or inquiry I wanted to bring to mind was whether a mirror on the opposite side of the road could be put into place, one of those compact mirrors, so that you could look across and say, "Oh yeah, it's definitely clear all the way to the gas station." And feel that much more confident when you're making your turn. So I put out on the front porch forum the thought, whether anybody thought that that was a good idea and whether there were any, you know, history or other concerns about it. And that was where the responses came from. It was a bunch of emails to me. Some of them said they'd be happy to share their name. Some of them said they, at least one person said they'd be happy to join me here. But I certainly wasn't thinking about it as anything official along lines of petition or anything. A couple of responses mentioned from maybe a former select board member that because it's a state road, it might need to go through the V-Trans. I left a voicemail with them to see if they might call me back. I don't know if that's the case. And if that were the case, another response suggested that maybe they would wait for grim statistics to accrue better than they have, which is great that there's not no history there.
There isn't.
Yeah, there's been, since I've been on this board, I think it's probably around 78 years. And it's come up every couple of years and again, something that's come up. And so it's been looked into pretty extensively. And there was, so the state did do a traffic study there. They've done a couple of traffic studies. And there hasn't been any accidents really there. We were looking at putting a light in, doing different things. And the state has really taken a kind of an eye and said, "Look, we're not seeing any problems here." There used to be a big pine tree there on the left. I don't know if you remember the big pine that was there or if you would post that.
I, no.
We'll give you last year's...
I can see on Google Maps though.
Yeah, we'll give you last year's town report. It talks about the big pine there. In fact, there may be a picture of it there, so you learn about the pine. In fact, John could probably tell. John comes down that road often. In fact, after our last select board meeting, he shared a conversation with me. Why don't you go ahead and talk about it?
Yeah, I mean, well, there was a very large pine tree there. People all thought that was because of the pine tree, that it was bad. But it's actually worse now. Because people don't, before, they had to inch out a little bit to see past the pine tree. But now you don't have to because the pine's no longer there. But all of a sudden, those cars that come from the south are right there. I mean, you look to the right because it's so difficult, first of all, to turn to look to the right. And, I mean, you have to take a look at the left again and the right again and the left again. It's really, really tough to pull out there. Unfortunately, we've tried everything there. And when we paved the hill, we tried to get the state to change the whole intersection. They wouldn't do that.
They did some upgrading there. They, I mean, we hired an engineer, Pedro, as I recall. Around 2018.
Yeah.
We did change the grade somewhat, fix the drainage, and added some better guard rail.
Right, yeah.
I mean, we did just about everything.
But other than straightening, it involved moving power poles. And it was just more than the state was gonna do. And that's why they, when they did that traffic stuff. And, you know, look back in the records. And then the other, the other thing is the mirror. That, because it is in the state right of way, they won't allow that either. So we've tried, we've tried everything.
They won't allow the...
Won't allow a mirror in the state right of way. It would be one thing if it were just town road, but because it's a state highway, they don't allow it.
Okay, that's interesting. I have no idea about these things. So it was definitely a humble inquiry. I just wanted to see if I could get my toe into a little bit of the town conversation and the safety base concerns. So there's never, there's never allowed to be a mirror on a state road?
I don't think that's the case. The responses we've got here, again, because they're looking at it as, there's not a problem. What we can do, though, I think we have someone that represents us as a regional. It's Tech, I don't know what that acronym actually stands for, but it is dealing with the roads and such. And her name is Joyce Manchester. We'll reach out to her and have her at her next meeting, which I think they have them quarterly inquire about that. And she's real good. She works actually in the State House. So she knows how to ask the questions and get at least a solid answer for us.
And so I think... We'll just add to our list?
Yeah, and we are working on with Joyce and John and I and the committee looking into some traffic county scenarios for the village from all the way up to Maine.
Like a traffic, like a warning signs or speed bumps?
Yeah, no, not speed bumps because of the state highway. But just some, looking at some strategies to how we can, you know, slow people down.
That's almost a bigger problem than, that would alleviate a lot of your problems if people weren't coming so fast through town.
That's right.
I mean, that's, you know, if people were going the speed limit or a little bit less, I don't think you would have so much of an issue. But most people are going 40 to 50 through town. And so that window there is a lot shorter. And, you know, not ungood, we've been lucky that we haven't had any kind of problems there. But I think looking into it, it certainly cannot hurt. So I appreciate you taking the time to bring it up to us. And if there's anything that we can do, we'll let you know. Or if there's anything else that you can do for us as far as sometimes these committees ask for people's experiences. So if that comes up, we will reach out to you. But you can also follow up with us, you know, a month or so to see if we've heard anything. But we'll try to keep you informed of what's going on.
Okay, I really appreciate the time and consideration of it all.
I hope Johnny, you had a comment or a question I didn't get to you. Did you want to add?
Yeah, I had to, what a friend has said. We know that junction road, how many have you been coming down there? 15 years? I've been coming down there 30 years.
I was going 40 years.
Lifetime member of the fire department and the ambulance department. And I don't know the numbers. I think we asked at one time, how many accidents have been there? Stefan could back me up on this. There hasn't been an accident there. Let's not say there could be one tomorrow. There could be one tomorrow. But we're used to it. There used to be a junk pine tree there. As John is saying, it was better when the pine tree was there. But we managed, when the snowbanks are there, it's a nightmare as well. And there's issues with that junction. And as has been stated, we've looked into realigning or changing. But it's a massive job to change that junction, something like that forever. It seems to be too difficult. And I don't know if anyone's made a check with the agency to see, you know, any amount of accidents.
No, we have, again, we look at, I was gonna say, within the last two years, we requested this study and I'm sure that we have it. And there just, there's nothing that's important.
I don't think, I've been 15 years I've been on the fire department, I've never been there for...
No, I've been there 30 years. And then Kim did say that, Bill Nellin went a little bit too far that time. And he was worried and he backed up and backed into it, but that was their accident.
An overabundance.
Yeah.
Remember the night, early morning, at like 5:00 in the morning, we were headed to San John. And we just slid all the way over on the cloud.
That happens. Yeah, we are on that junction. You should just be careful. I come flying down there with a red light. And I have a special technique, how to pull out there, I'm not gonna tell you. Same way, if you turn left, you see the carriage where, even look to the right, I see the carriage on the left is clear. I turn left on the wrong side of the road, this is with a red light, shoot from now. And as soon as I've turned, I can see that anything's coming. But if anything was to be coming, I wouldn't be in the way. But that's when I'm in a hurry. But apart from that, I've been through that junction, you can tell, 5,000 times and 2,000 times. Johnny bored me. And I appreciate you having me, but it's good to have you on call just yet. Who's ever made experience with a mirror at a junction? I've never seen one work well.
I've seen on people's driveways to get out.
Right, some of the driveways. The only thing I, the thing I would be cautious, cautiously about having a mirror there is people start cheating at that point and saying, "Well, I don't see any lights coming off the mirror. I don't see anything." So they're not stopping or slowing what like they might.
Just going for it.
But let's look into it. You know, the state may have some good reasons or some good explanations why it would or would not work.
At the very least, it was, it's been interesting to bring the conversation up and meet the room and the, you know, governmental machinations in town here and so on. So I appreciate the consideration. And all it is is the umbrella that keeps the storm away. That's good.
Well, thanks for coming down. And you're welcome to stay and...
It is, it is getting on to be bedtime, so gotta get back up to that baby. Thank you very much.
Well, welcome to Moretown. Welcome to Moretown. My wife will come bring your family to Morefest September 25th. Keep an eye out for them.
Excellent.
What did you say, I think it's...
Yeah.
Put a sign on the door, shirts, shoes, and whatever required.
It's got a beach. It's not a beach.
I didn't realize that.
Oh, it's been like that as long as I've known.
Forever.
Yeah.
They even rent them in the Moretown store like that.
All right. Mr. Plodkow?
How are you doing?
I'm well, thank you. How are you? Roll on up if you don't mind.
If you don't want to.
Then you know, Johnny. So why don't you share a little bit about why you're here tonight?
I'm here at your invitation.
All right, so we were asking you, because we don't have any listers or lack of listers at this point. We had someone that was going to be in tonight. And now he's got a conflict, so it doesn't look like that's gonna work out either.
I saw that email.
And so we are in need of some advice. And perhaps your services, I know Cheryl Lynn's reached out and you've shared. I've got some proposals or a proposal here. But can you share with the board, everyone, and the public knowledge, you know, what is required and some of the things that, you know, you can do?
Well, the first, I'm gonna ask, does the town have a charter? Do you have a charter?
Yes.
Yes. So if Sasha, if I'm wrong, you can correct me. So you need somebody that can sign a grant list.
Right.
And right now, you don't have anybody. I mean, and I think because of the town charter, you cannot just be done with a board of listers. Is that correct? So I think you have to have, check with the BLCT about this. I think you have to have approval from the town to create the position of an assessor. So then assessor, one person, or in this case, sort of member. I can sign a grant list, or Jane can sign a grant list, Cassandra, under my guidance, can sign a grant list, and you would be legal. Right now, I mean, you have to have at least two members of the board of listers to really be able to log a grant list legally. So that's what your dilemma is. And I know that I talked with Mike at length about this. And he was, needed to be done.
Yep, yep.
And so I was sort of forewarned about this coming ahead of time. From a Nimmer perspective, we're not gonna let you just flounder around, flounder. We're not gonna let that happen. But I think your biggest issue is in terms of either establishing a position of an assessor or finding at least two more listers. So I'm not sure if people, I'm afraid of my knocking on the door today to come and take that position. And I suspect that that's been true all the way around.
All right, we've seen that. We see it in a lot of our positions in town. Listers, auditors, those type of things are really difficult to get people to commit the time to because they're not full-time jobs. They take enough time, they don't pay enough, so it's kind of...
It really has got complicated. And it just, somebody walking off the street can all over do it. And the other part of that is it's no longer a three-month job. With the way things are set up now, it's literally a yearly job. Somebody has to be logged into the grant list or to my VTACs at least monthly. Current use withdrawals, HHS122 downloads, any questions, conversations about things. You know, we can, we can put data online to solve that problem. That, you know, that can be, take care of people coming in, wanting to get information. You can take care of that technically. But those other things, let's say this guy comes along, has 100 acres, then wanna build a house. We're gonna give their kid five acres. Well, that's a five-acre current withdrawal. Somebody from either assessor or lister has to sign off and turn what the market value of that five acres is within 30 days. So I know what happened was the spring, from, I'm speaking from Nimmer's perspective now. The HHS122s have not been completed. I got a correspondent from the state, because I know that all worked for me at one point, Don. And said that Moretown hadn't done any current use downloads and uploads for the season. So all of a sudden, they were coming to the end. We thought we were gonna be able to come in and just do our appraisal size of things. And they were in the office getting taken care of. There were, ended up being like 17, not simple transfers, but difficult transfers to deal with. The kind of, gotta go look at the deed kind of transfers. So, which is why we had to ask for an extension. I finally, one time, I said, "We're not gonna pull this off in three days." He said, "This is just a longer job, more complicated, more involved. We're not gonna do it wrong." So that was where that came about in the spring. I just told him, I said, "Stop. Just get ourselves a week or two to catch our breath and get this taken care of correctly." So we were able to do that, but kind of caught us off guard with that. So we would choose not, procrastination is the thief of all time, I mean, you know. So that's, we would choose not to be delayed in doing that. Rather be a little more in front of things. I'm not blaming the listers. I'm just saying, things got delayed from their part. Quite frankly, I think that some of the things that come up with listing today, they're over the heads of a lot of people.
Yeah, they got jobs.
And they, yeah, exactly.
And I think you hit it on the head where it's changed so much and that job is involved. You really need to be an expert on it. And it can really cost the town a lot of money by not having the appraisals done correctly or missing deadlines. So I know we've got, there's some assessor and appraisal agreement here, but some things that we need to, as a town, I think, decide where, which way we wanna go. And when we had, and this is what Mike, if you guys remember, remember when Mike was here, I don't know whether it was March or something like, March or April. And he, you know, he let us know what was happening, what was going. And his recommendation, if I remember correctly, was really to move on to a professional service like Nimmer because they just can't get the bodies or have the expertise to do it.
Though, keep in mind that from my perspective, I have a really large staff now. But we, I get one or two phone calls or emails a week to do this. I kid you not, a week. And last week, I had four. Four towns, you among them, that couldn't find listers. So this is something that's happening all over the state. You know, we've got all the boomers and we've all worked our rear ends off for a long time and retired. And, you know, so for a lot of people, it was a good part-time, help the town out sort of endeavor. And they're willing to do that. But quite frankly, I think we've driven people away because it's gotten so difficult and complicated. Really, really. And so from our perspective, the thing that's difficult for me is that dealing with the day-to-day correspondence and the phone calls that come in. We can't have somebody sitting here to deal with that and you, and you can't afford it. We have some towns under much larger, much bigger appraisal issues that we'll have somebody in there four hours a week. They're paying us good money. But they need that sort of presence. You don't. It doesn't make sense for a town the size of Moretown to have somebody to come in every week to deal with stuff. Someday, because some weeks, there's just nothing to do. So from my perspective, I like to have situations for town where they have somebody that can deal with the course, the phone call that comes in. They can produce a report for somebody, a probably a record card that needs to have one. That'll put that information up online. Or, and tell us if there is something that has to be dealt with within the next 30 days. That's where it breaks down for us. Because you don't want somebody here every week to do nothing, bringing to do that. And then for us, it's not efficient for our time.
So we would have someone monitoring that and then say, "Ed, we've got something here." And they come in and take a look at it.
You know, I would assign a couple of people to work here. You know, Cassandra pulled through for the town. She did it by herself, pulled through from Moretown last spring. Took it upon herself, did everything right by. Because you're on the cloud, you can do things remotely, which, I logged in to look at some stuff this year before I came over here. So, that's, that's a good scenario. Your records are online now, so you're really, the days of having somebody to come in and sit here and do stuff are just pretty much done, which I think is really good.
But something maybe as a group, but Sasha, I'm glad you're here, maybe this is some of your duties, maybe we can redirect some of that to do, I mean, answering the calls, you work, you do some of the treasury work, so you're familiar with the systems. You know what we're wanting as a board, so maybe that might be a person here, we can talk about that later, but think about that. So, if we had Nimmer, and then you as that contact person, because it's nice to have someone from town when they call to answer the phone, say, the lister's office or whatever it happens to be. And sometimes it's a simple, something, I have a question that we can get right back to where they can do, but as long as they've, they've talked to someone, I think, that's half the want there, so. Everyone, go ahead.
Well, you mentioned besides that part of it, but you also mentioned that if we go to your company, we have to change the process, we have to get to a town vote to have the town.
You know, please check, please check on that.
Yeah.
We, we do have that, in fact, Mike had given us the statutes on that, but because it is an issue with the state, I know we do need to get board approval, that's something that we can do in March. But there, so we can, and we have to look at it, but we can go forward with.
Everything else.
With everything else, and I think even signing off of the grant list, it becomes a definite.
Yeah, until, right.
Until the debatable. Right, so there is a process, I think we can do it, and I think we can convince people in the town, it's the right thing to do. You know, and if they don't, then the people who are saying they'll do it, then let them stuff in.
Plus, they're going to come in.
Yeah.
Yeah, let them come and do the job.
Yeah, yeah.
Because they'd be happy if three people showed up and had some intelligence and expertise or just some desire, I would go forward with it, but.
It really has gotten so technical now, just.
So, we have an agreement now with what we've been doing, can you just share what additional services will be offered in this agreement here?
The agreement's fine with what we're doing now.
Okay.
I mean, the only difference would be, I've always felt that if we got to an assessor position, that there's got to be a little higher fee for that, I mean, there's just more responsibility, I think.
Yeah.
And not, not that it's absorbed, by stretch of imagination, but right now, we're still at, well, I'm not sure, but we've gone to an hourly rate instead of a fixed contract amount. I think it serves the towns a little better right now, because, you know, what we, sometimes you have a town and you think there's going to be a lot of work, and it is that it's not. So, the contract is still there, and they get upset, as you did, put in forty hours that you have to do to do that, so we've gone to this hourly rate. I will just, will tell you, I would like to push the Nimmer to do everything on a pro parcel basis, on a cost, different level for an assessor than they risk for an appraiser. I, I think they're, they're different, but, and the requirements are different, in terms of experience and certifications and things along those lines as well, so. We haven't done that yet, so right now, we're still to this hourly rate, so where you're kind of using this as a need is.
Yeah.
If you pay us based upon that, so that's what the agreement currently is, but it does make the assumption that there will be listers to sign the grant lists in the spring.
Right, and that's if we need, and we can, for the intent of purposes, we need to get someone, we have one right now, Mike, and we need two, so we can get, if we had to drag someone in and make them become a lister to sign off.
Well, something that that's right now should be doing is the, the sales verification process on my VTACs, nobody is doing that now.
Right.
For you guys, and the state by the end of this month is going to be saying, Moretown, where are your?
So, now this is where this person will recap to you and say, so that's what I'm doing tonight, so go ahead and get this verification, whatever needs to be done.
So, they're, you know, they, it's, it's part of the equalization process, they're going to do their study, it'll be published in January, but they like to have all the sales verified as a last big defer, like those sales verified and cleared up by the end of July. So, you know, I would need to have, and I will, have, I'll probably ask Cassandra or somebody to jump in at some point in time and start going through that process, because I don't think we have anybody who's doing it.
Please do that.
Yeah, I think we're at the point where we're, we're going to, we're going to have to have your, you're going to have new services, you know, and change our things so that you can sign off, you know, the assess.
Right, and then we'll go through that in the March, but between now and that, you know, you'll have to do everything.
Like when you said, we don't want it, we don't want to let you hang, and we don't want it, you know, to, things need to be smooth, it's awesome.
Yeah, I mean, if you can take the town on as another client, then I think we'd be.
What do you mean?
We are, we're just expanding the services where the add-ons.
These requests, you know, now we're going to be a.
So, we'll have, for the time being, we'll have Sasha to touch on the person here. I know you're doing a lot with Cheryl Lynn, but I don't want to keep adding on to Cheryl Lynn's responsibilities. But we'll, and I'll talk to them both to see what makes sense, is that all right with you, Sasha? But yeah, even this, you know, I have no idea what's do or what's not, Cheryl Lynn probably does, we'll find the easiest, best working solution here in the office. But we'll have you guys going forward, just so we're not missing deadlines or doing appraisals and.
Did Sasha, did this, she must have gotten the my VTACs logins, we talked about logins, like I didn't hear none, she must, she must already have those.
She probably has.
I'll, I'll check if there, I'll see if it's there, so.
All right, um, did you want to talk about the reap, reappraisal?
Yeah, I just think it's nice, I could give you a full evening discussion about numbers, if you like, since I'm a statistician. But I just wanted you to sort of highlight some things that are happening, not only to units across the state, so I just finished seven reappraisals this year and ten last year. So, we've got a pretty, and we're all over the state, I think it's pretty handled what the market's doing, and also the assessor in town in Milton, so we're doing a reappraisal there as well, so we have seven more coming up. So, between like almost thirty, thirty towns, we're seeing what the market's doing, and it's somewhat scary. So, you know, I, I think that, quite frankly, selectors sometime get hung up on the CLA, kind of little appraisal. What I'm, what I'm going to break apart tonight is telling you, it's not very accurate, and it's not that it's tended to be inaccurate, it's the fact that it's the way that it's done over three-year periods, or this 2018, we cover sales back from 2015, not 2018, so the ones for 2020, the publication for 2020 was back, sales back from 17. So, that doesn't really reflect where you're at now, which is why I did the chart in the lower portion of the page. To really understand what sales are doing, you have to look at them by year, without them being blended over a three-year period. So, my favorite is to look at the aggregate, because the aggregates are sort of weighted to average, if you will, and if you, in 2018, your aggregate was ninety-five percent, so you were five percent below market value for 2018. And then you went down to ninety-two in 2019, and then, you know, these are sales in twenty, April first, 2020, to April first, 2021, and now you're down to seventy-nine percent of market value. So, in those three years, you've increased market value by sixteen percent. So, I don't, so anything after April first of this year is not included in that number, which is going to really, right, so it, it's worse than you think. So, if, like I said, welcome your own board with everybody else, I mean, they really have seen it everywhere, I'm looking at fifteen percent a year in Milton, increasing it back. So, your time is coming up, you know, I did the last year appraisal in 2012, and I've got to say, it's worked pretty well for me all those years. You've gone, I mean, because the real key is that your COD has not, up until this, actually got a break last year. You were fourteen, then you're eighteen, then you're sixteen, so on average right now, seventeen percent. So, when it gets at twenty or above, the state has a big stick they keep in a closet, and you get it out and come into the town, Milton, and Moretown, and say, thou shalt do a reappraisal. So, you're not there yet, but you're knocking on the door.
And it says COD number, that's what they use, and that needs to be twenty, or once it gets to twenty.
Once it gets to twenty, what it means is that, on average, you're twenty percent off either side of your assessments, up or down, so it's a forty percent swing. It's pretty, pretty lenient, to tell you the truth, but it also means that you've lost equity in your grant list. So, if your common levels below eighty-five percent or above one hundred and fifteen, that's one requirement, and for CODs above twenty, that's the other requirement. So, you're not there yet, your, your common levels, you, you have one year. I think you've got a year before, as we look at stuff next year, I think we'll, we'll be having a conversation about that you'll be under orders from the state.
So, you think in twenty-three, you'd have to appraise?
Um, I, I think you'll, you could potentially, you're going to orders, but definitely by twenty-three, unless the market just changes dramatically. I think it could, it might even happen for you next year.
Don't they usually happen every ten years, kind of?
No, it, it just.
They don't?
Yeah, it really just depends.
Sasha, but does it also depend on what the list, if they keep those values up when they're appraising the homes, or is that like?
Well, as I said, they can't chase sales, so somebody could have a place in for two hundred thousand, and the seller's two fifty, you can't put it to two fifty, it's just against the law. The state will throw out your grant list, because they're going to say you're chasing sales, so you can't just kick it up. What they want is they want that common, your common level numbers, again, it's pretty, pretty lenient, I think, but it drops off a year of sales each year. So, now your seventeen sales are gone, and your eighteen sales are up, and you see what they're at, they're ninety-five percent. So, this year, you're going to be okay, but next year, the eighteenth are going to drop off, and you're left with the nineteenths and twenties and twenty-ones, so I think you've got a year.
What type of expenses are going to be for us? What type of expense is that going to be for us?
I, I did a proposal, or you just need to see what it would cost if I was to do one today, I don't know if you got it or not.
Yeah. I didn't see the number on the other chip, where is that?
That was ninety-five thousand, so I'm, you know, I'm trying to do things about a hundred dollars in margin now, but I will tell you this, that I already gave up three or a hundred, probably four contracts for 2024. I'm that far out, I'm booked up for 2023, four, I can't get any more downtime to do reappraisals. So, we're at the 2024, I have one proposal, I got one, so I'll go for 2025. So, if I heard you correctly, so if, if our common level appraisal is, is up by twenty percent, we just can't go through or change twenty percent? You cannot. You cannot just do that. I, I'll tell you the world according to that, all right? I think every town should update their property value every year, because now you're going to be in the same situation as I just ran into in three towns on the state, so. This is huge, on runs of, we'll make the papers, Moretown and Milton coming up, huge fluctuations in terms of increases and changes in value. Because in Milton, it's been since two thousand and six, since they did their last reappraisal, they're going to go up thirty percent, twenty-five and thirty percent, and they think that the old values mean something. And so, it, it's not that it's wrong, it's that it's hard to explain to people, and they, I always hear it all the time, you, my value went up thirty percent, I didn't do anything to my house. Well, I, my new response is, well, the price of gold in two thousand and six was six hundred dollars, and now it's eighteen hundred dollars an ounce. Gold hasn't changed a bit, the stock's gone up, right? So, it, it, the, I think, I think towns have waited too long, I think I got, had to do an interview with a reporter for, for Menon who just needs to reappraise, same, same topics. What about the significant increases in value, I, I just think we wait too long. The perfect scenario, in my opinion, will we get a reappraisal done, and see what the market's doing, and then the five years of sort of a cutoff before the state will allow what you're talking about. If you've had a recent appraisal in the last three to five years, they will allow towns to do an update. And I helped several towns this spring do them, because they had just finished reapraisals in the last ten years, and the market was going out of, out of hand, and they had light front properties, and they were going skyrocketing. So, I did an update, I have to do a data quality study to convince the state covers their rear end with this, that the data's okay, and if the data's okay, you can come back along and do an update. Then I fill in all, and I do, do a sale review, do all new schedules, all new land schedules, depreciation, new cost tables, the whole nine yards. But they wouldn't let you go if you'd gone beyond five years to do that, they just wouldn't do it, they wouldn't prove it. So, I, I'm here just planting the seed that it's something you have to start thinking about.
Absolutely.
You've done, you've done well, you've done well since this, since 2015, you've done well.
We got to at least be thinking about it so that we can get it on your schedule or something.
I say, and I will tell you that there are fewer companies that are doing re, re-outwork now. There's a couple, a couple or three out of state ones that like to get into state a little more, but they, they just, quite, this is again, world according to Ed, they haven't done very well here, to tell you the truth. There may be two or three other small, smaller companies that have been doing some stuff, one of them would never work up here, they're way up south. There's two of us in the area, that's kind of all there is. I, again, I, when I, when I first merged my company with Nimmer, this is after we got done in Moretown, I'd also finished reappraisals in Altman City, and merged my company in with, with Nimmer. And I had, I brought with me two of my staff, and now I have eighteen people who work for me. So, that's how much demand has been for us to do it, and like I said, I'm out for 2024, and I already have three or four towns. It's back to our original conversation, it's really gotten technical, it's very complicated, the state's making changes in how they handle their software. We're updating all of our software as well, we hired two new programmers, and we're starting to go to bridge modeling, that's the other thing that we're doing, so.
Complicated, yeah.
It is, it is, it is, it's not straightforward.
And this big surge in the last year with the sales, there's no help.
You know, it, it has been, although we haven't seen the impact yet.
Yeah.
I'd go for, I'd go for the school board in Milton, because they were worried about the increases in value, and what I told them, I think it's true, but this really started in 2019. When interest rates got really low, if you, if you look at the median sell prices from towns by year, you, you will actually find some that there are more sales in 2019, but the median sell prices were actually a little bit less. Because the sales, the interest rates got lower, and people could get into the market that couldn't get in there in the past. They started buying properties when interest rates got down, you know, four and three and two plus percent. Now, post-COVID, it's a different group, now the people that have money are coming in, paying cash replacements, and bidding, bidding up houses, so that's a different group. This thing really started in 2019, it's really going to start happening.
Well, any other questions for Mr. Plodkow? We have, there's some things that we got to do, but at least going forward here, know that you'll be a lot busier here in town with the day-to-day work, if you will, and.
Any else, Sasha, let that get hold me, if you got something that comes up, just, you know, let us know.
Yeah, and we'll, and we'll get a process so that we're not missing anything, that's most important for us, make sure there's some kind of a check, because I want to make sure that either side. Make sure there's some kind of a check, because I want to make sure that either Sasha or Cheryl Lynn knows where to check, what to check, when to check, you know. So maybe we'll try to figure out those procedures, but we can help, get some help from you on that. Just so we're not missing anything, and then we can move forward.
Okay.
Thank you, sir, appreciate your time.
Yeah, we appreciate your help, too.
So do we need to have a finance assessment service?
No, no, that's what we're already doing now.
Oh, right there, okay.
Includes the interest as well in any of the attorney's fees. Which is a lot of harm at this point. All in favor, go right?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. So, the next thing we had up on the agenda was the lister position that Bill McGill was coming in to look at. And he now has a conflict because he's possibly getting a new job. So, he's not here. And I'm not seeing, well, we're a little bit, it's seven o'clock. Sam Rosenberg, is he supposed to be coming?
Not so.
Alright, well, why don't we just go ahead and why don't we, Sasha, what do you have for your reports or communications?
Well, is he, was he taking that we were just select him or do we want?
He needs to come in.
I, I just, the way I read it, I thought it was we were just gonna review it or something. But maybe that's what he is, I don't know.
Yeah, I thought it was gonna be-
Reading the emails, that's all. Anyways, whatever.
I, does, does anyone know Sam at all?
No.
I have no problems appointing anyone that has-
I actually reached, tried to reach out to him over the weekend, but I didn't, you know, just to say hello, you know, like, you know, just-
Well, there's, there's nothing going on between, with that committee between now and our next meeting, so if there's miscommunication, we'll, we'll ask them, just so we don't hit the meeting.
Yeah. Cause he ran for the school board as well, so I thought it was pretty cool that he wants to be involved in community, yeah.
Yeah, no, that's good, I keep on. He was in Jack's house, right? Renting that on 101 B?
No, that's somewhere, I don't think so.
I think he bought a house up on Moretown.
Right, I thought he was living there in Jack's house.
No, that's Patrick and Jack.
Called that someone else, alright.
Those two, yeah.
Alright, for someone who wanted it, I think it was there, but doesn't matter anyways. So anyways, Sasha, back to you, reports your communications.
Alright, I've got that updated Peak Mechanical Contract, it's in there, if you wanna go ahead and sign that. They will fix the, the light that Efficiency Vermont found to be not installed correctly or not working right. And they will do the furnace cleanings twas a year. I also fixed the burning per John's suggestion for the personal policies, that's in there as well. That Act 250 hearing, would you like it handled as far as, like a town event, like we did with the insulation, what we do with insulation?
Yeah, I think it could be killed.
And then, the memorial out front here is leaning. Sherman talked briefly to Mary Murphy and she doesn't think it's part of the cemetery. But she has been doing some, asking around for some quotes and it definitely needs like cement underneath it. It's about twenty-five hundred dollars.
Is that the war memorial from?
Yep. So I don't know what you guys have the thoughts on that.
Yeah, also, certainly not for this year, is that anything that, that our crew can do, anything like that?
No, but I, possibly tell Gavory to work with our crew, you know, if he can buy the equipment to move it out of the way or whatever. Or if this one happens, it's a better, something like that might work.
Yeah, maybe can we just look at that?
I'll, I'll ask Joe, I imagine Joe was busy.
Wouldn't it be this year?
Yeah, I mean, we gotta, we should get a call.
Call from, yeah.
And that was the memorial right here.
Yep. In front of the Old Town Office.
And then Sherman left revenue and expenditure reports for you all, so you're up to date on that.
Thank you, that's for me.
And then maybe Catherine had, she replaced a bulb on the main floor in the town hall. And she said that there's a set of, set of lights on the stage, if the fixture is broken, only on one side it kind of works. And she, I guess she's looking for some direction on that. And then she looked at the mold that I forwarded on to you guys and she said she could treat it with bleach if you're good with that. And also, what would you like me to do as far as that goes?
Did we know, did it get wet?
Yeah.
I think it was after that torrent of rain we had last week, or the week before.
I don't, I don't know, continues raining. I think we'd have it solved and then, I don't know. I would treat it with the bleach right now.
Is it something that, I mean, that basement, it's in the basement, right?
Yep.
That basement has been around and I extent the thing about the basement guy. Maybe it wouldn't hurt to have him come in and look at it, cause that's specifically what he does is basements. To figure out, even if he can figure out how to prevent that from coming in and potentially look at it to see, to make it more of a viable spot for activities.
Yeah.
Can get incorporated into the whole town hall thing or something.
Yeah, no, I think that would be the idea Sasha, if you could look at that and the, the electrical thing, I think we use middle sets electric. If there's an insulator out there, we don't wanna burn the place down.
Yeah, I think they changed their name now, Blue Lights.
Yes.
Whatever it is.
Yeah, they sold it out.
Also, said something going on with the doorknob there.
Over there? The front knob there?
Yeah, yeah.
Joe again.
Joe's got the job done.
Joe was like- I would ask him about the doorknob.
Johnny Summer, too. Just looking at his shoes.
Something winter. He has his boots.
Yeah, with no socks on. The bottom of his feet are like-
They're gonna be like leather or like cotton.
Hotter than leather, that's incredible.
Oh, good for him.
He's a character for sure.
He certainly is.
He's a good guy.
He's good, he is good guy, always very polite.
Yep, well, I know, he's never a valley ambulance he's on, he was serving the fire department, he's, he's a good man.
Yeah, good dude. Anything else Sasha?
That's it.
Mr. Ray?
Well, I don't have anything, everything I wanna talk about is in the old business.
Okay. Don, what about yourself?
No, no, I guess I'd be like Ray, I'd be into old business and new business.
No problem, Kelly?
Anything.
Very good. Let's roll, can I wait, John, big John?
Well, I guess I'll mention it now, I could wish for old business, but I, I did get an email from, uh, It escapes me, just a minute, Chris, Chris Stevenson. And he was wondering about, you know, regarding the, the rec committee, he was wondering about, once again, the trees under the power line that goes to the town forest. And I know that we talked about this back in October, November. And I haven't had a chance to go back in a minute, Sasha, do you remember, did you find anything?
No, no, I didn't get a chance to dig further, but I remember it too.
Okay. Because when I called this guy from Green Mountain Power, he said that he wasn't the person to talk to. And, and then I let Chris know and Chris called him back, I guess, and he got a different story when he called him back. And the guy's name is Jared something. And bottom line, he said that, you know, that they would not accept a direction from a committee, would have to come from the select board. So he was gonna, supposed to call, this is Pat Class fault, he was supposed to call the U R myself, and he never did, this guy Jared.
Yeah.
So, and, and, and with me, when I did talk to him directly, he gave me a runaround that he wasn't the right person. So, I think that we just need something, I would say something official from this board, to stop spraying, you know. I mean, they, they spray Roundup on all the vegetation, just like they did on the common road, under Carl's, on Carl's property and the power lines. And we've talked about this in the Clean Water Committee, Advisory Committee as well, but this is not acceptable. You know, this stuff gets into the groundwater and everything else. So, and he says, no, it's, it's safe for the environment. It's, it's not, so. So I, I, I would say that, you know, either you're right, I, I don't mind, I don't mind calling the guy as long as I have the blessing from the select board.
Are we gonna ban it from all, the power lines in North County? Or just some of the-
That would be, that would be nice.
I think so, why would we not?
The main, the main reason for there is because, you know, the kids are out there and everything else, I mean, it's just not, not safe, even though he says it is. So.
Maybe he should come to one of our meetings or something, so we could, I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think he would.
I think so, we're gonna meet.
No, I know, I know.
Well, what's, what's everyone's thoughts? I mean, obviously, we know John's thinking, Ray?
Yeah, no, my thought is, I would, if we're gonna ban it under some, we should try to make it under all. And there are other products that they can use. Yeah, exactly. More environmental than- Oh, definitely, yeah. Roundup, I mean, you know. I mean, yeah, granted, Roundup is-
Pretty effective.
Yeah, it's pretty effective.
It's cost-effective, it's not gonna-
Exactly, that's right.
That's the big part there, there's a lot of things that are effective, Roundup is cost-effective. It's great and it pretty kills everything.
Yeah.
But where they can go in, spend labor, and either cut it or there are other products, so. You know, I think Green Mountain Power does a good job, but they also, they make, they do quite well, so I think they can afford to maybe spend a little bit more here in Moretown under their power lines and do it environmentally.
I wonder what other towns, I wonder what other towns.
I would say most people that knew it really know, you know, I'm saying it. Or even don't worry, you know. Until it's really, you bring it up, you don't think about it, it's just like, jeez, you know, you'll see with some tree line, land and cutting stuff once in a while, but Otherwise, they're doing, they're spraying a lot of that stuff, and that stuff is nasty. I mean, it does, it works well, but it's not-
This is all the brush, so we're not talking trees that have grown up in, you know, water, they spray this for all the growth.
Right, yeah. I mean, this tree is, you know.
No, I understand that.
I mean, I don't even think the road department's using it.
No, Martin is draining it and, you know, where there's bad knot weed, he will go and treat small areas where he needs to, if it's really a problem area. But even then, they don't like to because it is really toxic and most people don't want it on their property.
Unless people do it and they don't sell you.
Yeah, there's a lot of, I, funny story, I won't out the guy, but I was at, I think it was, I don't remember where it was, and I saw him carrying a yelp of that. And it's some guy who would just really not think in town would, you know? So there are those people that like to complain about it, but well.
I know at the meeting that Warren has been really, with Warren Conservation, people over there, they've been really working at some eradication of knot weed. In fact, they had something last Thursday that I was gonna try to attend, but it was raining and I just went, I don't wanna stand in the rain. Just trying to show people how to, you know, how to do it, it's quite a process to remove it.
They have a ton of it too. My parents' whole lower field is nothing but knot weed.
Yeah, I really don't think it given, but it sounds like it's liberal or something, but it's effective. Anyways, so-
Yeah, now, in terms of all of Moretown, I don't know how you can really regulate with other people, you know, people's property.
No, no, well, not lines, just under the lines.
Under the lines, yeah, that's still, they have a right of way, but it's still personal property. Now, this is specifically town property.
Oh, I see, what you're saying.
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
So for this town school property and the, the-
Yeah, so all town.
Far as, how far are the town?
I, that makes, I guess that would make sense.
Yeah, and, and perhaps something rather than a phone call, perhaps a letter.
Yeah.
Sign that would be.
Alright, so why don't you, John, why don't you, or all move to, I guess what, what agency is it that we're sending this to?
Well, we'd be sending directly to Green Mountain Power.
To Green Mountain Power, right. So I have to move that we send a letter to Green Mountain Power stating that as a town select board, we don't want them using Roundup on town-owned property in, in the right ways with Roundup. Wait a second, Ray, seconds, any other questions on that? Alright, all in favor, go right?
Aye.
Aye.
Good. And so Sasha, if you could, John, why don't you work with Sasha on that?
Okay.
Alright, so square heads into old business, I haven't, alright, no, pardon me, before we do that, we have the minutes of July 19th.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we accept them as I will be amending. And that would be under the, on the final page, under executive session. After it says, Sasha, after it says due to attorney client communications. It would be regarding an accident on a town highway. Then as per Title I, Section 313A. And then also, and then when we say, when you say all in favor, you should add that Attorney Philip Woodward is invited to attend the executive session. So anytime anybody's invited to stay for the executive session, we should put that down. And then I believe, you had a question on the timing too. I believe the 8/11 is probably correct, because we were in executive session for quite a while.
Right.
So. And then, let's see, who is the second, who seconded that? Kelly seconded that, okay, maybe I should, Kelly seconded, all in favor. Ah, okay, four were in favor, oh no, that's, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm back, I'm on the wrong one. Where it said Tom seconded, all were in favor, that's okay. And then, when we get to coming out of executive session. And then go down to Ray motion. And there's no second there. Do you recall who seconded the motion to the settlement?
Cause I think Ray was the second, I think I made the motion.
You made the motion.
No, because I read the letter.
Right, pardon me, you read the letter, I seconded.
Yeah, that's why, I was gonna say I remembered it, I seconded it.
Okay.
Yep.
And then, there were, all, all four of them were in favor, but I abstained. Okay. Whatever, that's fine.
Any other changes, thank you, John?
Yeah, I got it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Kelly seconds, no more changes, all in favor, go right?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, Ray, why don't you go ahead and start with your old business?
Oh, I just told this, I'm on ATV and it's, I hadn't really done much, I guess I was waiting, and I thought we're gonna have the state tweaking tonight, but is that next week?
Next week.
Next week, so I had really kinda waited to see where, what they have to say. Unless you, I don't know.
Well, I was kinda thinking this weekend, cause I mean, no matter what we put in, people are gonna do it anyway.
Right.
I mean, there's, technically, if you wanna be really technical, there's not supposed to be ATVs up there now. And there's people who are coming from outside of Jonesburg Road, driving all the way up there and going around. So, I mean, to be technical, but, I mean, I wonder if we just keep it, cause we were talking about class three. But I wonder if we keep it, we put in for class four, so that everyone who's up there on the class four is covered. And then give ourselves time and bring up the class three around town meeting. Where we can have a bigger discussion about it, and then it's coming in for your full year in the spring. That gives us time to figure out more of what we need for the three. And, you know, getting the state police in, figuring out what we need to do for signs, because I still haven't heard about signs. So, if we work on just keeping the four.
Keep the class four, yeah.
Because I think if anyone's coming up to the four, I mean, no one's complained for now, so keep it there and-
Yeah.
And then bring it up, have that set up at town meeting, so we can have-
For a broader discussion on-
Broader discussion.
With the town. That makes sense.
You know, and, and those people like me are on John's group, it doesn't make any sense to trail up to class three, you know, I drive, I break going, I put out my outlaw, I even- Figured, I've never been stopped, actually, I can't say I've never been stopped, I've talked to game wardens on the road. And, you know, as long as, and I've always been registered in each year anyways. And, you know, I've never been following to say, but unfortunately, there are not, everybody cries like me, you know?
Yeah, and I think, I mean, the main people who I see, who are, that I see frequently, who are riding on the three are, you know, puttering along. Herons come up from Berlin and they drive all the way up through and they just putter along and they're fine.
Twenty miles an hour, twenty-five miles an hour.
Yep.
Not hurting anybody.
Right, just a little.
Those are the ones that have more, uh-
And then you get the, you know, the-
Consideration, right?
Yeah, I mean, there's some pretty powerful machines out there now, and, you know. Anyway, so, so the other couple items here, highway software, I did talk to Martin the other day. And he's expecting to hear from Turner, Mr. Turner, anytime now, and I get offered to learn, I said, if you wanna make over, you know, any day, you know, like a Wednesday. I will meet with Turner, so you, you can go do your road work, whatever, but we need to get this done, so.
Right.
So I'm working on that.
Is there, um, Would Rodney or one of the other guys, I mean, Martin, you know, does not like-
Right.
Paperwork, I mean, it's not, he's thinking of running beyond the greater and such. When he was out, or not even when he was out, last year when we needed some things, Rodney brings up his phone, he's like, loads and all that stuff. He has the aptitude for that. Is that something, maybe you know a little bit more, would that be something you think, maybe we should ask Rodney to be looking into or working with us on? Give him some more responsibility, cause he seemed to step up with that. And it would free Martin to do what Martin enjoys and what he does best.
Yeah.
And then, you know, Rodney doesn't, he'd be more suited to sitting in the chair anyways. So maybe why don't we, but talk to Martin about it, suggest to him that we get Rodney involved and, uh, we need to tell Rodney that. But, hopefully Martin will, I think, what do you think?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, cause I think Stefan's gotten off.
Yeah, Stefan's gotten off.
Everything.
All those other, between the fire department and animal control and that, he doesn't need to be, but, you know, Rodney's been around, he does, it'd be good for him to step up and, and get a little more responsibility for him. I think he, he would enjoy it actually, or maybe not, but I think he should, so.
Yeah, a little problem. Uh, so, so Don, we've talked about the whole town garage, the lights and condensation thing.
Yeah.
I can tell you what I have done, on my part, you sent me that information, and I reached out to EF Wall, who had built the garage.
Okay, you know, perfect.
And asked them, you know, what about a complete package? You know, can you put together something for both buildings? Give us a, you know, I, I hear, here, my thinking is, we put an RFP out with a mid date of mid September and get pricing. When does the work have to be complete, I guess?
I think the end of the year.
I think this year, yeah.
Okay, alright, so, he was worried about schedule, but he felt that they could do something in October.
For the, for the condensation thing and the lights.
Yeah, everything, everything, the whole, the whole package. So instead of having two separate contractors, but we should, you know, I mean, we can price it with separate contractors as well, but I believe EF Wall would be interested in pricing both buildings, all of the work.
What's, what's, what's your?
I talked to us, wasn't it something that the town, wasn't there something at the fire station?
Oh, no, not, not, just the town.
Okay, alright. So just the town garage, so.
And what I, what I've done is, I tried to call electrician, I haven't heard back from him, and I sent an email to our contact at Pete, is it Pete?
Yep.
Yeah. Just to, and sent him the, the report from Efficiency Vermont to see if they could help on the condensation thing.
So.
And then the guy finally sent today, the guy from Efficiency Vermont, I had asked him like, you know, do you have any contacts that some of the people Efficiency Vermont works for? Cause he just gave us some names.
Right.
Cold call place right now, forget it, everybody's so busy. So that's what we just got today.
Oh, man.
I like your, you know, that's a great suggestion, if we can get one guy out.
I mean, EF Wall is familiar with the-
Yeah, yeah, that's perfect.
But, so I don't know if you wanna put out a public RFP or just start sending, sending, make up an RFP and just send it to-
Do that, right?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, I guess so.
So, you can get together.
Okay, yeah.
Or I could, we can even do this online.
Probably, a phone online, yeah.
Yeah, if you wanna try, you wanna try to make up an RFP and, and send it to me, or I could, or either way. What I was basically gonna say is, we need a, here's a report, you can price all the work or part of the work. Just make it clear what you are pricing, but we need price by this day, maybe that's all I need to do.
And I think, yeah, but I think that we could look at the list that the guy sent us, just to see, cause if we, like, you know some, some of the subs, like EF Wall, obviously. And maybe, and Pete, we know, because it is gonna be hard to find anybody, so if we can find some subs, or not subs, some contractors who we've worked for, that we have more chance that'll gear up to do it by the fall, or, you know.
So what, I guess what-
So let's look at that list tomorrow or whatever.
I could try to put something together.
Yeah.
Help us, help us, and send it over to you, if we like it, we can send it to Sasha and she can put the whole package together.
Great, off it goes.
Off it goes and get a price back by, in mid September.
That'd be pretty good.
Nice, that'd be good.
And then we get some money from Efficiency Vermont too as well.
Yeah. That's all I got in old business.
Very good, uh, Don, what do you have there?
Well, I called back the gentleman at Green Mountain Power about the taple school. And he just said, hey, keep us posted, you know, we're interested in, he's, um, They're a little bogged down right now because they're having to do a, a nat project and another project, sort of a whole, something, I think he said, water flow assessment in the land and the wa, and the dam. So he said, well, he'll get back to us.
Okay.
I went to, I did stop at the state garage because, you know, still about 101 B, you know. I've managed to find a, the assistant foreman just told him that by the Moretown Village sign and up by the curbs after Stephanie Venom's house, that, you know, the road was, you know, it's not even a year old. So they said they'd look at it, you know.
Yeah.
You were gonna try, said, we're also trying to talk to people in D-Trans, but they said to come in, so I did that. I wanted to just try to see if we can set up some time that we can meet at the sand pit. And, you know, look at the trees, and you had that other, those other trees or bushes that you were talking about at the last meeting, so.
Okay.
I don't know, we can call each other during the week, maybe we can, we can go swimming there at the same time, if we got a good day. And then just, the Owl's Nest, just to remind people about if they wanna take a look at the Owl's Nest down there and, you know, or talk to JB, cause he'll, you know, you could probably just talk to JB.
Just talk, I've spoken to me.
Oh, great.
I'm comfortable with it, if people are-
And Sasha was looking into something too as well, so I was just wondering how we were doing. And Sasha was looking into something too, as well, so I was just wondering how we were doing that.
Did you? What's that?
I'm sorry, I didn't, I spaced on that one.
Oh, that's fine, you know.
That's right, okay.
Um. And that's all, I just have a, that, I'm good, oh, and we're gonna need a, have a town, I'll send this to Sasha in an email, but we're gonna do a town, have another town, our town hall committee. We're gonna meet on eight eleven, at five thirty, but I'll send that email to Sasha.
Where are you gonna meet?
At the town.
At town hall.
Yeah. We're still waiting from the, for the report from, uh, Bill Gallup, but, uh, it should be, hopefully, with any luck, we'll have it before this meeting, which would be helpful. But we figured we'd need to meet, just so we can.
Keep, keep the momentum.
Keep some momentum, because we'd like to have at least something for Morfes. You know, that we could show people, or talk to people.
Talk to people a little about my, you know, what's going on.
Yeah, so, that's it for the meetings.
Kelly, you got the?
Not, that was it, just A two, you said, that was it?
Ready, John?
No, another old business, I mean, I could bring the, the mask thing up under new business, right? I mean, I'm, I'm wearing a mask mainly because of the new CDC guidelines and the fact I have a grandson. And, you know, we gotta think about the school kids, too, going back to school, this is, this is ridiculous.
Yeah.
What's happening, I mean, you find out that, you know, anybody who's vaccinated can pass it on to children, I mean, it's just, it's horrifying. So. To me, it's, mask back on, uh, we, originally, we're gonna have an in-person, the town, Waisel Town Hall in-person Ridge to River meeting on Thursday. Um, and we, we got, they got, even got the, the owl to, to do both, a Zoom alternative, you know, instead, we're gonna do it all Zoom, once again, so.
What was that meeting, what were you saying?
Yeah, what's that?
No, no.
The Ridge to River?
Ridge to River. Ridge to River?
Oh, okay, sorry. With your mask, again. No, I.
You know, like, you know, Essex County, well, I mean, that's, that's, that and Chittenden are the two worst counties right now. Yeah, because of the, the, they have the biggest increase in cases, and you know what's happening, people from down south are coming up here, because it's safe.
Right, and what.
Applications for.
It's, it's, is vaccination, is the.
Yeah, I know, I know.
And, we're, when, uh, it's this, is it next week, that we're having the?
I think it was four.
Or is it?
There's Wednesday, maybe, yeah.
Here, uh, in the, at the school. There's a vaccination clinic going on, right? Um.
Oh, great, wow.
The, uh, what is it, the Waterbury Edmonds, they, a couple, a week or something ago, just checked to see if we minded, and I said, no, it would be fine if they had somebody on the parking lot. So, uh, you know, encourage everyone, um.
But to what John's talking about here is the headline in the Mont Digger, substantial COVID spread places Chittenden, and that's a county, other new CDC guidelines, and today's cases were forty-two cases. Friday was fifty-five, so, you know, the delta, the delta, I know.
That's my.
It's my, by the way, that's what it is.
I have two colleagues that have been vaccinated, and they were idiots, so they went to Florida, both of them, different, and they both came back with, uh. Covid. Yeah, yeah.
They haven't changed our guidelines at work yet, so we're still.
Yeah.
I mean, we can, we're in our office, and we can go out wherever, but we're also, everyone that we go see is basically vaccinated, and everyone in the offices, so.
Yeah, well, at this point, I mean, at this time, there's no. Um, as far as the state guidelines, as far as doing anything, um, we know it's worked out well.
Yeah.
Yeah, who knows what's coming.
Uh, it's a fortunate situation, but, you know, again, uh, because people aren't getting vaccinated, it just mutates.
Yeah, exactly.
That's the problem, you know?
It's a particular virus, that's what we do.
Yeah.
So, John, are you suggesting that, not so much tonight, but that we need to start thinking about as a board, how we're gonna be as the town, we have to wait for the state directive, or?
I, I, yeah, I'd wait to see if the state vaccine changes, that's, that's my opinion.
What do they, there's been a recommendation for masks in schools, is that correct, or no, I mean, or is that CDC?
That's the CDC.
That's just the CDC, yeah. Of course, CDC is for any indoor, anything indoors, is what their recommendation is.
Yeah, people.
So, the way I understand it, is if, if you have been vaccinated, you may still get Covid, or COVID or the strain, but you're probably not going to die.
Yeah, your, your chances of dying, or, or, or being hospitalized are extremely slim, but you can pass it on to children. And they're still working on the vaccine for, you know, going down under, so, I mean, it's, and that's my greatest concern.
Has there been an outbreak in children?
Yeah, yeah.
Of, of children dying, or just.
I haven't heard the numbers on, on dying.
Kids are, they're sick, I mean, they're getting sick, but I don't think it's.
Yeah, I mean. I guess I don't want to go out on something too much, but, and, um, and I, I just think that at some point, uh, we, we need to recognize. That Covid is always gonna be here, there's always gonna be people with it, just like several of the other diseases that we have, the cancer, et cetera, et cetera, that, you know, we just. Maybe we don't spread cancer to each other, but it's still there, it's, it's one of the things we have to deal with in our life, you know, that.
It's like with the flu every year.
Yeah.
It's.
Except it's killing a lot.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Well, the flu, actually, if you look into it, it kills a lot of people.
Not six hundred thousand.
Not six hundred thousand, no.
Not six hundred thousand, no.
But now, if you have the vaccine. The likelihood of, uh, dying or being hospitalized is, is very low. Um. So, you know, people aren't getting the vaccines are the ones that are in big trouble, we don't want anyone to, to die, or we don't want to push that on anyone. But to your point, right, it's gonna be here, and do you wanna go around the rest of your life with a mask on? I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, and I, personally, I don't, it's taken on my grandkids, this whole Covid, uh, they're all healthy, you know, thank God for that, but it's take, the mental stress on everybody is, is overwhelming.
Yeah.
To these kids.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it really is, I mean, my daughters, who are a little older, you know, and we had that conversation, and she was home this past weekend. It really, it's been really tough in there, and she's like, I just don't wanna go back to that again, you know, and people are really, it's tough, you know, and people, everyone do their job, and get vaccinated.
Yeah.
You know, um.
And pretty much Vermonters have been doing this.
They have.
Yeah, that's good, great, Vermont, yeah.
You know, we're the safest state in the nation, but.
Yeah, but all the, uh, applications are way up, and for, uh, UVM, and, and, so on. Because everybody wants to, to Vermont, where it's safe.
Are they requiring vaccinations, because I know some schools are.
Yes.
I think it is, you know, there are people fighting that.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Well, they require you to go get your meningitis shot before you go to any college, whether you want to or not, you have to go do it.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, yeah.
So, it's the same.
Yeah, so, we'll, we'll see how that, but it is a concern, I think, everyone around this table, um, and, and we'll take appropriate steps as needed, but. At this point, I look, you know, I, uh, let's see what kind of guidance we have from the state. Anything else, John?
Uh, no.
Anyone else that's in business, uh?
I just wanna mention a new business that, uh, anyway, I think we talked about the school that last meeting, uh, not giving a compact or something for their road crew, so I. I told them today to start looking into pricing again, when we manufacture something like, I believe Duxbury manufactured something for, I think he said twelve thousand dollars, whatever. But we need, we need to come up with something, I think it'd pay for itself, and just, uh, the, the, the way the, the gravel products are today, they seem to really, uh. See, the oil and more products, whatever, that, when you get a big store, it becomes so slippery, it's, it's like, worse than ice, right?
Stefan is actually just talking about it in here before we started, about Duxbury having a roller behind the grader, and how nicely some of the roads, because I guess they graded on Thursday before it rained.
Yeah.
And he said one of the roads there looked great.
Yeah.
You wouldn't have even known.
I mean, really, it should be done.
Yeah.
It's the, I think it would pay for itself, in many ways. So, anyways, I told Mark, just get some pricing, and hopefully, we can get it in our budget next year.
Very good. Alright, Don, what'd you have?
I just had a, a question or something, maybe we can think about, or maybe you already have the answer, but. Do we have anything for like cybersecurity kind of thing, I mean, I know it's a small town, maybe we don't need to, but I've been, I was having a conversation with someone, you know, all these computer ransomware things, it's even, has happened to municipalities, you know? And I just, I didn't know if we have, in our computer system, if we have some kind of security, or, I, I don't know.
We do.
We do.
Butter Nut Systems is our IT people.
And they have a security.
Yep.
Perfect. But, you know, it just occurred to me, I just thought.
I think that's a good question, you know, especially as we get more and more things are online that we're doing.
Yeah.
I mean, there's a lot of information that, you know, some of these people probably use.
I don't know, then they brought, you know, I don't know, the whole thing is crazy, what's going on with ransom.
Sasha, could you do us a favor, and, and maybe from Butter Nut, give us, and I'm sure they've probably given it to us before, it's about, I'm sure there's a document here somewhere, just what we have for s- security, so that we.
Know?
You know, uh, we don't know what question to ask, but I don't know, you know, if we have cybersecurity, yes, so what does that mean? You know, that we have a good password, or, so, it would be nice to know.
Yeah, when we get an email from the town, and we reply to it, if we have randomware or something on our own computer, now we send it back to the town. You know, is it gonna be like, yeah?
I don't know, yeah, who knows?
Or vice versa, maybe you should from the pet, probably stuff from the town, and all of a sudden affect my.
Yeah, well, I don't know.
We just had it at work, where we got an email that actually looked, like, it looked legit, even the email address looked legit, because sometimes we can look at them and say, oh, it's supposed to be dot org, and it's dot com.
Yeah.
But even that looked fine, and probably a hundred people at least opened it, and we all had to go in and change our passwords.
Wow.
So, now every email we get, we're like, wait, did you get this email, is this?
Yeah, so, we'll, we'll see, and if there are any education or anything that we should, or things that we should be aware of, just so that, I mean, I think we're all doing business now, so you know the things to look for, but, you know, maybe. Maybe there's other things, anything else, Don?
No, that was all, that was.
Kelly, Kelly, what do you got, any, nothing? John?
No.
Well, we just have a few things to sign, and we'll get back at it.
I inadvertently, actually, this was on my desk, I.
Oh.
That's my glance, though.
Inadvertently, come on.
No, no, I just noticed it was here.
Get it for the camera, please? Zoom in.
Congratulations, John.
What's the name here, John?
That's Anders.
Anders.
Anders Philip Tell. Oh, Anders, I'm sorry, Anders Peter Tell.
Great picture.
Yeah, he's got arms, well, yeah. Yeah.
Looks a little like Grandpa.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Very nice.
Although I'm Opa, Opa.
Opa, oh, okay.
Alright. Sasha, were those things in here that we need to sign?
I just put them in there, and it know what you were, you can write them out.
Yeah, they have this whole thing, you know, the quote, not, you know, it's like, we have to line in, and it was all online, you really don't know, it's, they're counting, it's working, you know, why?
Daniel, what you should really read, if you wanna read something interesting, war zone regulation.
Oh, the guy wrote a letter, and I saw something in the paper the other day.
Oh, maybe it was my dad.
Oh, I don't know.
He wrote a letter?
Of, of a penny.
Yeah.
In the Valley Quarter, oh.
It may have been.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't really pay, I'm gonna go back, I'm like, tonight, I see who wrote it.
So, what'd you say about our dad?
I didn't say anything, right?
No, because I guess they're making it so if you have like a camper, you can't have your camper like in front of your house, it has to be behind your house, your garage doors have to be behind your house.
Yeah, I was reading some of that, there was some real things.
There was some pretty crazy.
Oh, yeah.
Why don't you do that?
Yeah, I know, yeah, right.
It's aesthetics, it's all aesthetics. Dorset has the same thing, if you ever drive through Dorset, you'll notice if you're on the main strip in Dorset, you have to have white house paint with black shutters. So, when you drive through Dorset, all the houses have white or black shutters, because it's in their town.
Alright, so I just signed the, uh, preventative maintenance agreement, it was the one, and that was on the, uh, that was for Peak, which we talked about. Um, and we have. Uh, this is just a, I guess, sign the assessors, like, in here, but that's the one we've had, and I guess it's just continuing on the dates, um, we've got to June twenty, twenty-two, as far as the, um. Services and the costs, so, that's, that's kind of a good one.
Oh, the lawnmower is back, too.
And. And then the personnel policy, and which was changed, uh, for John's, I mean, insurance, where it was updated. Hey, John, you were looking at this, um. The, uh, the, uh, junkyard on number two, when is it, doesn't that ever come up for, uh?
Yeah, that, yeah. I don't know if it's every year or not. Um, I remember we, we signed it, it has been a while, yeah, it has been a while. I was thinking of the, the same thing, um, so maybe, maybe Sasha, maybe we should look into that.
Yeah, just look into that, that's.
I think when I first got on the board, it was, that's what I, I remember it was, it was the sale.
It would change hands, right?
It changed here, yeah, but I don't remember, that's all I remember was.
We shut it up. Ice horse.
Yeah.
That's one, that's, actually, regulated business, that should probably clean in what it is. As, uh, there were some dills up front, there were some, um. Serious.
So, what do you do if you have corn?
Yeah, and then you have a whole bunch of it, come on, just decide to lean over, because the wind and the wet ground is now it's leaning. Like, when you're gonna try to, for the broken, it's just. Is it still, um, is the root still in?
Yeah.
You don't wanna move around it too much, it's a little fat, too.
But it's just kind of leaning over on some other ones.
Lots of corn, though?
No, I mean, not, you know, I have two, like, five by five.
Yeah.
Squares kind of thing, and the middle of one, another squares, a few of them decided to lean over, I was, just the other day with that. Before the rain on Friday, we had the big wind, I think, on Thursday, it was really windy, wasn't it, or something?
Yeah. Yeah.
Where is that one?
So, I, that one's just, um.
Yeah, he's on.
I don't have to sign that one, right? I don't have to sign that one.
Just one, just to sign here.
Just to sign.
Yeah.
Well, here's.
We're getting out the time now.
I don't have to sign that one.
Yeah, even though it says sign here.
Yeah, I'll sign that one. Okay, I'm good.
There's two in the bag, or there was one in the back, it was the personnel policy, that was the most important.
Here we go, is that you right there, right?
That'd be me.
There's another one right now, there's another page here, you know?
I think that's a, yeah, that was.
You going on vacation, are you gonna go take a little vacation in August?
Uh, no, I'm gonna take some time off, but I just had to.
It might be a staycation.
Yeah.
Those are always.
I don't think I wanna travel to many places right now.
I agree.
Stay at like a food.
I know. I mean, I went over to Maine, it's just, I was saying, I rang up the phone here, it was just on the coast, and it was just, a lot of people were traveling, a lot of.
Well, I get on that way, the, the Portsmouth area, it's crazy.
Crazy. Traveling it, driving it.
And everyone's like very like short, you know, and they're.
My brother said that, I guess you've, uh, we're up on coast, man, I don't really picked up this thing. It's like, people are calling it revenge tourism, because people are just out there, you know, I want this, I want that, places are full, you know, full, you know, everything's in demand and, you know, lines for this and lines for that, you know, just like crazy.
Yeah, and no one, you know, everyone has limited hours, so we can't get people to work and.
I think the Capitol Plaza is up to three hundred dollars a night, not three hundred dollars.
Really?
Wow.
The Capitol is two hundred dollars.
See that?
Lion's demand.
When we went to Hampton, you have to stay two nights. I knew it was going, so I wasn't sneaking up, you have to stay at least two nights, if not three, most places, and it was like three hundred dollars a night to stay.
Yeah.
On a shirt.
Yeah, that's, uh.
But you don't have to go anywhere, you can stand on your beldum and watch everybody.
Oh, yeah, no, I think it's, if we're gonna go, we can do that, that's what's next to do with that one, but.
And everything is booked, that's the amazing thing.
That's amazing.
Everything is booked.
Oh, and you can't go anywhere if you wanted to.
A friend was telling me a story that, uh, you know, a friend of his sent his kid in, he got, you know, three iced coffees or something, this is down on the cake, doesn't it, you know? And, uh, you know, gave the kid the card, the kid comes out, and how much do you think three iced coffees should be, right? Fourteen dollars maybe, fifteen dollars, it was like thirty-two dollars.
Oh.
So the guy sends his kid back in to go, they must have made a mistake or something, you know? And the guy goes, no, that's what it is, you don't like it, don't come back, you know, we don't really care, that's what it is.
Dip your eight ounce.
Right.
Cappuccino, get out of here.
Like, seriously? The guy didn't even care, you know, okay, you don't like it, that's what it is, don't come back. Cause there's, you know, a line out the door. Really?
That's.
That's how people got in, I don't know.
We were having a little family party this weekend and tried to get a quarter potty, quarter potty?
No way.
And none available, every place in Vermont is like, yeah, good luck, everybody's having a party.
Everybody's partying.
Uh, the place right across, was it Lynn River, right across from the Formula Ford, had a bunch of them out there.
I know.
Just one on the back, dirty job.
I do miss one.
No. Oh, it's the quarter potty, thank you, Ray. Uh.
One more.
The, uh, the More, the More Fest Queen is working with the Recreation Queen, and the Recreation Queen's bringing in, uh, two quarter potties for the More Fest, where should they go?
B and B.
No, no, uh.
What did you say, B and B something?
Ticket, why not?
I thought you said where to see?
Where should we go, yes, okay, Ray, we got that, where, where the quarter potty is going?
No. Now open the door.
I don't know.
So somewhere out by the, I don't know, the pavilion or where do, where does?
Yeah, probably.
Yeah.
I'd, I'd have near the entrance, or.
Yeah, all right, so.
Four foot one one please, one.
Yeah.
One over.
They should be experts in that, they come in, assess the position, you know, things and put them where they think.
Yeah, I mean, maybe just right out of here.
Yeah.
Yeah, where they can.
Cause we all walk right into this gate, gate right here, right?
Yep.
Yeah, right by the gate.
Well, maybe across and by the pavilion.
Near the gate, okay.
All right, all right, Ray, thank you for your expertise on that.
We don't have to make emotions.
Yes, yeah.
We don't need emotion on that.
No, 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 we were just, yeah, they're getting two, they're getting, uh, ones with comforting, uh, wheelchairs and, uh.
Great.
Sasha, they are so good, all right.
I also, I got the, um, fireworks contract sent to them.
Okay.
I got Steph and she signed the works permits with all that stuff, so.
Perfect, so one other thing, uh, Sasha, if you could look into that, we can probably do it, it's really expensive, because, um, the store is donating, um, for the pig roast. Could you have a sign made, you know, just the vinyl and say, thank you, Moretown General Store for sponsoring the pig roast, so that we can hang out that day there? And then at some point, I'll talk to Sherlin, but we just need to send them an invoice up at John for five hundred dollars. And have it, um, attention Sean Bartlett. Thank you very much for the, uh, I'm Lou Tujer.
Second.
All the favor? All right, thank you, everyone, safe there, thank you, Bartlett.